Item forty-four. A resolution to consider approval of a project plan and creation of one or more tax increment districts under Local Development Act, directing project plan, appointing a review committee, directing the review committee to make findings as to eligibility and financial impact, if any, on taxing jurisdictions and the business activities within the district, and directing the review committee to make a recommendation with respect to the proposed project. I will entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Second.
To accept or reject? Accept, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Walker.
Thank you. We talked about this at the council conference, so I'll try to be brief, but essentially, this resolution is the first step of many related to a proposal that was announced back in September by Team Norman, a proposal for an entertainment venue and a development in University North Park. That proposal, in order to go through the process to create a TIF, or to have council consider creating a TIF, begins with the appointment of a statutory review committee. This committee would be made up of representatives of the city, the planning commission, the affected taxing entities, and then three at-large members, who would then consider the proposed project plan, the financial analysis, and all the things that are needed to make a recommendation. Once that is, goes through that process, it then has several more public pieces to the process, including a hearing by Planning Commission, two public hearings, and then, of course, council consideration. This resolution was put on your agenda at the request of council to get that process started, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Schuler.
So we learned in the conference session beforehand, a little bit more about the process that Ms. Walker laid out. So the first slide that we talked about in the process was a project plan, and you outlined some of the things that need to be included in that project plan. Do we have a project plan currently?
We do not have a completed project plan at this point. We are still working on that, and there are still negotiations to be done with the developer.
Who writes the project plan?
The city will write it typically. We'll take that proposal, we'll take council input, and we'll take the financial information that we know, and put together a project plan for all of the consideration points in the process.
Is it customary for us to create a statutory TIF committee before we have a project plan complete?
It's not a requirement necessarily, but typically what we have done is develop the project plan prior to appointing the statutory review committee, because that is the focus of the review.
So that is what we would be sending to a committee? So if we don't have anything to send to a committee, then what do they do?
Essentially, we would be appointing them until, to be in place until the project plan is finalized and able to be presented.
When is the anticipated date that we might see a project plan?
I don't really have an estimate. We're working on it very hard, we're working on it with OU, and trying to get that finalized as soon as possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Holland.
Thank you. We received a letter from the UNP TIF Development Oversight Committee. The five members signed a letter requesting that, basically that they be privy, presented whatever information that exists. And I think, I talked about, talked with you about wanting to make sure that was the case, that if we were putting this on the agenda, that we were also initiating that information to go to the oversight, or Development Oversight Committee at their request.
Yes, I apologize, I didn't bring that up before. That is our intent. I outlined sort of the statutory process, but this would be an additional level of review that that committee has requested and council has expressed support for. So our intention would be to take that project plan proposal to that group as well.
And then, any, after a plan is made, after it's reviewed by both of them, both of these committees, it would then come back to City Council for consideration of approval?
Correct.
And it also would have to go through Planning Commission as well?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Does that have to go through pre-development?
The project plan does not, the proposed development will, because it comes with a zoning change.
Okay. So potentially, for public hearings, before any decision by the council would be made?
Correct.
That would just be standard, in addition to whatever other public meetings we all hold?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Walker, what we're actually doing is laying down, describing the property that's going to be in this tax increment finance district, and laying a framework for the administration at some later date. Is that correct?
That's what the project plan will do. This resolution is just sort of kicking that off with the committee. The project plan will outline the boundaries of the increment district and the project area. It will tell you what public improvements would be included, the amount of anticipated private investment, as well as public revenues that we believe would accrue, a list of all project costs, and then the general, a general description of the method of how that would be financed, and then any proposed changes in zoning or master plans, and then, of course, maps that show all those things as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Nash?
Yes, I'd like to say I believe that this, the formation of this committee is...
Tip down a little more.
All right. I believe the formation of this committee is incredibly premature. I think that this organization wanting to build this arena, this entertainment district, hasn't achieved the basic and fundamental thing that we're supposed to be representing up here in the dais, the will and the desire of the people. It's been, there's been nothing but overwhelming opposition to this, this project and this arena, and as of yet, you know, even though this, this is a project that I would love to get excited about, that I think, it has the fundamental pieces that can make into something that can be an economic boon for the city and the community, and something that we could be proud of, but none of that except for the arena and a large piece of land, in effect, the same thing that we were proposing last time, is being, is where we're at now. And because of this overwhelming opposition, without any kind of fundamental desire from the people to want to see this thing, then it would be inappropriate to progress this project forward, to make even one more step progressing it forward. Now, there's nothing that's prohibiting them legally from divulging this information, this economic situation that they're proposing to create. So far, everything that I've requested has been denied. The only thing that they've given us is what's statutorily required to form the TIF committee and to move this thing forward. Now, if that's not barreling it through the process without us knowing, then what's it feel like when somebody is getting one over on you? It feels like everything's fine, like everything that you're doing is inconsequential and has no negative ramifications until you find out that you're wrong. And I see this as being, as a step in the process, being pushed way too fast, way too early. We just had these meetings a couple of weeks ago to just even get basic numbers. We haven't even had time for them to come back with answers to our questions yet. And here we're already taking the next step to get this thing passed through. It just seems incredibly inappropriate, and that's why I can't approve this one. Sorry.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Yes, sir.
So, when the idea of creating a new TIF came up, several of us mentioned that not only have been discussing the idea of multiple TIFs in Norman, how, and how to best use the TIF tool to help other areas of the city. We've talked about, you know, East Lindsay and East 12th, and West Lindsay and North Flood, and Ednova Parkway, and potentially the Griffin property, depending on whatever happens there, which is still up in the air. Does this give us the opportunity to talk about these other areas as like a TIF, an overall TIF conversation, or is it, we're just talking about this only one?
This resolution's really just convening the committee. If there was another project plan out there, the same committee could consider that as well.
Could we ask them to look at other...
Yeah.
...areas of the city that could be viable, or attractive, or appropriate for a TIF?
Typically, the statutory review committee is looking at a specific project, and we would develop that and bring that to them. I think a council committee might be a great place to start with that. I know that's something you guys have been discussing, to kind of start looking at all the different opportunities. There are certain areas designated by statute that qualify, just as a matter of law, and so we can put those up on a map and look where those opportunities exist. We had a conversation maybe a year or so ago, but I don't think we got into those specifics, so we could certainly bring that back.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now, are there any comments from the public?
Yes, we'll start with David Moore.
Thank you, Dave Moore. Ward five and ward three. The city of Norman, a project plan and creation of one or more tax increment districts and appointing a review committee. Now, council and audience, turn to page 724 in your packet. You've read these pages, correct? I assume so. Then you notice this proposal comes from Team Norman to build this grandiose entertainment district they've been slobbering over for so many months now. I draw your attention to the numbers listed here, sixty and forty. Ever since the arena idea was resurrected back in February of last year and morphed into the entertainment district we face today, we've heard eighty-twenty. The university and private investors would provide eighty percent of the funding, and the city and public money would provide twenty percent. In fact, it still says eighty-twenty on the Team Norman website today. Those numbers were obscene enough, though. No public money should ever fund this type of private business venture, but there was Norman's own version of the new fascism, corporate socialism, and public-private partnerships, sheep's clothing. You have a business idea? Great. You buy the land, you pay for it, you build the building, you develop it, you pay for your own business ideas. Don't come along and say we've got to divert public tax money away from truly public projects like schools to pay for private business ideas. But wait, now the numbers are sixty-forty, with city and public tax dollars providing sixty percent of the funding, and OU and private money only amounting to forty percent from a proposal that wasn't even on the council agenda last week. What happened? What's the big rush? What's the big rush to pass this rigged item when there's no way in the world that the council members have been able to truly study the new proposal? It's a stacked deck, and it's not stacked in favor of the people of Norman. Then there's the issue of the review committee, that's supposed to figure out if all of this is even a good idea or not. Look at pages seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven and seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight. Guess who's going to be on the review committee? The same people who came up with the proposal in the first place, Team Norman. Team Norman is going to review Team Norman's proposal, basically. That's called conflict of interest, and if the council doesn't stand up today and say no, then the fix will be in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alex Lampier.
Alex Lampier, ward two. I don't know how to follow that, but I agree with Mr. Moore. I feel like this is a project that's been kind of like forced on us by NEDC in the chamber. You know, if OU and private, private interests want to pay for it, cool, I just don't feel like paying for it as tax fair. I also have some issues with the transparency around it. I feel like all of those, those like visioning town halls solicited public input in good faith, or good faith from the community, and, you know, I saw all those cards. I saw, you know, people wanted homeless shelters and community centers, and then at the end, we get this precanned response that we saw a few years ago and the public rejected. So I'm against this, I appreciate it, thanks much.
Thanks, sir.
Marguerite Larson.
Marguerite Larson, ward six. I think this has been shoved down our throats since day one. Frankly, I'm tired of hearing about the SEC. I think we need to start thinking about what's best for Norman and Norman residents. If you have all this surplus of money, then why don't we start investing it in our own community? I don't think that any type of an arena is going to be bringing in a million dollars. You're just going to be moving my, you're just migrating money, like what happened at Target, it's just going to be moving to this area. You're not going to be incorporating any more money, you're just basically moving it. I think this is a waste of taxpayers' money. The arena has been voted down before, and I, I just think this should be dismissed, put to bed, and be done with it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, ward four. Everyone who cares about Norman should be embarrassed that this resolution is on the agenda. It's absolutely premature, it's a pig in a poach. The idea being discussed is extremely controversial. The public has received zero details. Evidently, you haven't received any details either. The concept itself is even Schrödinger's plan, right? It exists if you want to praise it, but not if you want to criticize it. It popped on the agenda scarcely twenty-four hours' notice, and even then, there were no details in the amended packet or presentation. That's not openness, that's not transparency, that's not accountability, the theme of the evening. The basic idea of the Team Norman plan doesn't pass the Econ 101 sniff test. Economic development incentives in general, and TIFs in particular, do not generate net new economic activity. That's what the evidence tells us. Instead, they move existing activity, and that's what Norman's experience with the UNP TIF was. We needed to end the increment collection there, remember, because of the diversion was crushing our general fund because of the diversion into the TIF budget. Even if we don't have a sales tax TIF here, it shows that that diversion exists, that you're just moving the cheese, not creating anything more. All of that raises a host of issues about city government picking winners and favoring some over others, we'll talk about that more later, but further, economic development incentives like this reflect a real lack of faith in the market. If we're predicting future demand, things like the SEC or whatever, then we should expect that market forces are going to lead to the correct supply response. There's zero reason to have the government being, picking winners here of the relevant suppliers. What we just saw, the presentation, really should confirm your general skepticism that we should feel. There's still no project plan, much less any appropriate economic analysis. We're setting up a group of yes-men for the plan, whatever the plan turns out to be, that's how it works statutorily. Passing this resolution would confirm the worst suspicions of the most jaded Norman resident about who really runs Norman. By statute, the people on the staff review board are likely to be advocates for it, because they're the people who are proposing it. We only, or at a minimum, you should postpone this issue until we get a project plan. And then, before we even do that, you should let the public have a chance to vet the economic claims, because like last time, they're really, almost certainly garbage. When you look at the actual empirical evidence, these things don't generate new revenue, and the entire point of the plan hinges on that. So don't do anything tonight, please.
Cynthia Rogers.
Sorry, let me get up to the top here. So, I'm really passionate about data-driven research and informing policymakers. As an educator, I'm passionate about intellectually honest and balanced discussions of projects. Also, if you take a look at my CV, you will see that this sort of project falls squarely in my wheelhouse. I'm really knowledgeable about the studies on economic impacts of sports facilities and incentives. I've personally published a study on how the Thunder impacted sales tax generations at different locations in Oklahoma City. I'll share that with you if you want it. Fascinating stuff. I served on the state's incentive evaluation commission and published numerous studies on the impacts of economic incentives, and their impacts on economic outcomes. Basically, I know my stuff. Should we commit public funds to build a city-owned arena? If we should, should we use TIF? I would argue the answer to both of these is a definite no. TIF were originally envisioned to address blighted areas that face barriers to investment, and to development, and to capital, private capital. The use of TIFs has been expanded to areas that don't fit this criteria, to even subsidizing greenfield development, or in Oklahoma, maybe tan or golden field development. There's really no impediment for OU building an arena in the University North Park area. They own the land, they could build the project. Tomorrow, today, the city would have no way to stop that. But that's not what's going on. What's going on is, and the real controversy, is should the public commit funds to build an arena that would largely serve OU basketball moving from one location to another location in Norman? So, the research would suggest that this would just shift where spending occurs and not create net new activity, not create net new sales tax related to games. And logic would tell us that, too. That's not new activity. It's not new sales taxes. That's a crucial point. If this isn't an economic development aspect, then is it a quality of life aspect? Well, then, we're talking about something more like Norman Forward. And if it's a quality of life, because we want people to have a nicer place to view basketball games, but fewer fans, well, then that's something we should bring to the public this evening.
Paul Wilson. Did you say no?
He said no.
Okay, I'm sorry. Dan Shim.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dan Shim, ward five. I would encourage you to adopt the proposal and form the committee. The committee commits you as council to nothing when you form it, but what it does do is allow the plan to be presented. As Catherine said, it will still go before the Planning Commission, it will come back in front of council, but this keeps the process going and lets the plan be presented. So I would encourage you to please form the committee this evening. Thank you.
Scott Martin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Scott Martin, ward five, and also with Norman Chamber of Commerce. I'm excited to finally be before you on this topic. I thought this was going to be a couple of months ago, but thrilled that we could be here tonight to discuss forming this committee. And briefly, I just want to lay out some of what Ms. Walker talked about, which was who's on the statutory TIF committee. It's laid out by state statute, our taxing jurisdictions, and so representatives from City Council, the chairperson, excuse me, the Norman Planning Commission, Norman Public Schools, the Cleveland County, Cleveland County Health Department, Moore Norman Technology Center, our Pioneer County multi, Pioneer multi-county library system, and representatives from the public. Like you, I work with all of these entities regularly, trust, admire their professionalism, the expertise that they bring to the table. I'm anxious for them to get the project plan, which we're excited to see, for review. And lastly, I'm most excited probably about the one-whereas clause, where it mentions one of the three at-large review committee representatives is required to be a representative of the city's business community. And whereas proposed, a project may include retail development, which I believe this project does, that representative must be either a retailer or a representative of a retail organization. So local business will be at the table. I think that's very important. And lastly, I would expect that this evening, this particular proposal and project to form the statutory TIF committee would garner the same, I believe, unanimous support that TIF number three did when it was formed. So I'd encourage you to vote yes this evening. Thank you.
Holly Hunt.
Good evening, and I'm excited to be here for the first time, so I appreciate the committee, the council, and the mayor. I am, I've lived in Norman since 2003, and I am a resident of ward three. I want to thank the council honestly for the discussion this evening, and for considering item number forty-four, the creation of this TIF committee. We are, OU is part of Team Norman, and we're excited to be a part of Team Norman, because we think that this entertainment district is going to be beneficial for our students, our student athletes, and our graduates. We're excited to continue this discussion. We've enjoyed all of the discussions we've had thus far with council and the mayor. It's been an honor to get to know each of you, and we do believe this is an important step tonight to continue to talk about the finances, to continue to talk about the development, and continue to try to push this project forward. So appreciate your consideration. We're honored to be here tonight. We ask for your vote on approving this committee, and thank you very much.
Joe Castiglione. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and appreciate your willingness to listen for a couple of minutes. As mentioned, my name is Joe Castiglione. You get to practice that a few more times. Over a twenty-five-year resident of the city of Norman, I live in ward eight, but also here to represent the University of Oklahoma. We're part of a, really a special moment in time, and we're faced with opportunities to make the most of it, and I think this is one of them. We have a chance to be part of a transformative project for the city of Norman and our county of Cleveland County, that really serves many, many people. I know that there'll be talk of an arena, and for us, that is a very good thing, because it allows us to continue to bring people to Norman, to marry the town gown, to represent this city, this state, on a national scale. And why that happens is because facilities are very important to the growth of programs and the attraction of the best people, whether it's athletes, coaches, how it transcends to the rest of the campus, other people coming to this community. So tonight, I ask that you support this. We're making an investment in it as well. We're putting significant financial resources toward this project. Let me be clear about that. This is creating additional competitive benefits for the city of Norman. We want to be a great partner. We're going to operate as a great partner. And every part of this project, we plan to be and have been transparent. So whatever questions that come through this study, it'll be able to bring the sunshine, the light, whatever it is, on all aspects of the project. So I ask that you support the forming of this committee tonight, and we'll work together to make something very, very special happen. Thank you.
Cheryl Ann Dinsel.
Well, you know, OU is my alma mater, but, you know, Norman is more than OU Athletics. Norman is so much more than that. And I feel like this smacks of cronyism when you stack the deck with people who are basically Team Norman. And I also feel like, if you want to make money, and not have to put out money to make a lot of money, invite a corporation like Buc-E's to Norman, and everybody will go there and enjoy the tax benefits from sales from Buc-E's. That's just seeds for thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Evan Dunn.
All right.
So I know that this got on the agenda yesterday. I know that the public was particularly outraged by the lack of notice, and that this is the start of the process. I think also, this was the first time that council has, in any way, shape, or form, talked about this publicly with our community, and in our conference session, you know, was the first time that we got a layout of exactly what the process is going to look like. And I am personally concerned that we don't have a project plan ready... And I am personally concerned that we don't have a project plan ready to give a committee if we were to approve this tonight, and, you know, also that we, as council members, only got to see what realistic numbers looked like last week. So, I appreciate that there is a timeline that OU is working on, but I also think that we need to allow our public some time, and I think allow the council some time to really digest the things that have been in front of us. So I would like to make a motion to postpone this item until we have a project plan ready to deliver to a review committee.
We have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to, what date?
Postpone until we have a project review, or a project plan to review.
Motion on the floor is to postpone until we have a project plan to review. Okay? Let her finish writing, and then... Council members, you may cast your vote. Oh, you want to discuss him? Sorry.
Public. Public comment.
Public comment. Okay. Anybody in the public?
Yeah, we have, to council have questions.
Yeah.
Well, I've got, we've got the motion on there, you've got, I've got all kinds of people looking at wanting to make a comment.
Who in council wants to make a comment? Councilmember Gray.
A question. So could we still send that information to the TIF Oversight Committee after, like, we postponed this, but also the info that we saw last week moves ahead to that Oversight Committee? Is that possible?
It's possible. That's not final information yet, so it'd probably be more productive if I see what you guys are going to see, so you have that feedback on the specifics.
Okay, I just wanted clarity around that. Thank you.
I kind of understood this as a vote tonight would be giving you direction to develop that plan. How long do we think a plan like that takes to do? Because I do see the merit in, if it takes a month or two or longer to develop, having a committee formed and ready to review it when it's done, instead of waiting until it's done and then trying to form a committee. So, how does that work out in your view?
And that's what I understood, as well, is that the direction would be to have the committee in place, so that when we have the project plan finalized, we would begin those meetings. I don't know when the project plan will be complete. I can tell you, we have an outline now, but we've got to continue our discussions with OU and finalize those details before we can finalize the project plan. We're working on that. We've had emails back and forth since Thursday night, I think, after I was able to talk to council members about it, and we're trying to get a meeting scheduled. Unfortunately, it's a day I'm out of town, so it'll be after Thanksgiving. That's the earliest we could get everyone together due to the holiday.
So currently, there's not anything to review or look at, and there's nothing for us to share with the public?
Right, and we have working documents we're trying to work through and trying to develop our final documents, and as soon as those become final, we want to share that. And when that happens, we will convene the committee and get that process started.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, or, excuse me, Catherine? The longer we, please control that, the longer we spend waiting on answers for those things, does it make it harder for us to lock down the price of money that'll be used on this? Are interest rates moving?
Yeah, as you all know from our own projects, construction costs don't seem to be going down, and neither do interest rates, and so that's definitely something that I think we're all thinking of in terms of wanting to get something put together pretty quickly for council to consider, so we can, we can get going if that's the direction of council.
And on the scale that this, that money would be used at, that's quite a bit of money, would you say? And so, there's one thing to expediency, and that's not, that's being able to talk to people, to get that plan done, to get all the numbers right. If the numbers keep on changing because of interest rates and such, because we're waiting, it's real hard to come up with a, with a, a final number. I mean, you can be close, but close doesn't make it in this kind of a thing. So if we're going to build the framework and at least have those things going, I would recommend that we do not postpone, that we go ahead and get it done, and just to work and, and just work out how we need to pay for this, so that we can get those numbers finalized. That would be my, my thing. Any other comments from council? Okay. Yes. Oh. Sorry. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve contingent on a project plan on a future date, or is it to postpone until we have a project plan?
Postpone is what this motion is, then the next will go back to, depending, the next will go back to...
Thank you, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. Did I stab you in the hand? Sir.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. I want to speak in favor of the amendment, because it actually really makes good sense time-wise. As you'll notice, we can get together a TIF Statutory Review Board pretty much just at any meeting, because almost everybody who's involved in that board is chosen statutorily, and the people who are interested have an idea of who they want to put on the board right now. So assembling that group isn't going to be difficult. The advantage of this plan is that it gives the public a chance, and the City Council a chance, to have a look at what the project plan is likely to be. You're in a slightly better situation than the rest of us are, because you know at least, or at least some of you know something about what's being proposed. And notice, there's zero barrier from the University of Oklahoma, or the OU Foundation, or OU Athletics, from announcing what they're proposing right now and doing this in public, which would be the transparent way to do it. So, you know, thank God for tenure, because I'm going to talk against my employer here, but OU doesn't necessarily have the interests of the whole town in part, which is, which goes back to what TIFs do. TIFs change where activity is, so they change who the winners and losers are, and surely the project plan being proposed is going to be one that's advantageous to the University of Oklahoma. It does not follow, and it's important to see that it doesn't follow, that it will be advantageous to the town as a whole, especially given that the limit is mostly a limit of demand. I understand that when people from the president's office were in front of the faculty senate executive committee, they were a little bit uncomfortable answering questions like this. One of the members of that committee is a spouse of an economist at OU, like me, and was asking the questions, and evidently didn't get very good answers. So I think it's important that you get the answers beforehand, before you decide whether or not you want to take any steps in this direction. We're not saving time. It'll be easy to pull people together once we decide that this is a project plan we want to go forward for. Thank you.
I actually signed up to talk to this earlier. I've signed, I had to sign up twice because this was put on the agenda so recently. Why did you put this on the agenda so late? Please stop doing this. Stop doing this. It's clear and transparent why this gets put on the agenda in this way, and who this kind of procedural smoothness is for and who it's not for, when you choose to use your procedural expertise and administrative expertise to help some people get things through quickly and smoothly, and when you use it to obstruct, it's clear and obvious. We can see it. So whenever he was talking about some of the most jaded people in Norman, you know, that this just confirms more of their own belief, I'm one of those people, one of the more jaded people in Norman about this process, and I started off extremely starry-eyed a couple of years ago. The way, okay, you, they, you, when you make room for these money developers...
Sir, the question on, on the floor right now is, do we postpone or...
Yeah, I'm getting to that. They see, they see housing, they see development as a, they see it for what, as speculative asset, and that is divorced from its use by the people in Norman, and we saw three examples of that today. We saw three examples of the way that developers, landlords, they see these things differently than we do, including housing, including this new project right now. One example is the TIF itself, which, from my understanding, is it's capped at an increment, and then all taxes that come after that increment go back into the space, meaning, go back into the area defined. Meaning, if you define a poor area, then all that taxes is prevented from going out into other areas. If you put it in an area with rich development that's going to be producing a lot, all that money is going to be going back into this. This is what called, this is what caused people for the last TIF to call some TIFs Robin Hood TIFs, i.e. take from the rich and give to the poor, and some reverse Robin Hood TIFs, i.e. take from the poor and give to the rich. This is an example of the second. It's developing all this economic benefit and then capping it and putting it right back into the thing. That's one example. The second example is what Sean Rieger said a little bit ago. He said what? He said, uh, he said, "If you don't let us poison the lake, we're going to, we're going to do capital flight up to the city." Like, let us poison the lake, I know you're in a tough position, but that's just how it is. Again...
Sir, would you call to the question, please? It's whether we're going to postpone or not. That's the question. What are your thoughts on that?
Whether, whether, whether or not we're going to postpone. You should clearly postpone on this question, because you don't have a, you should clearly postpone on this question, because you don't have the information in front of you as to whether or not this is good. And every bit of context that I just gave is relevant. There's nowhere else that I can give this kind of context except for this, except for this tiny squished three-minute forum. So when I come up here to say my...
And I support postponement, and the main reason is process matters, public input matters. If we're going to do a project that people are going to be on board with and feel like they were kept in the light, having the first study session to discuss this publicly and then voting to move the process forward is very bad optics. It's also super disrespectful to citizens who want to be engaged and want to be involved. I mean, luckily, somebody let me know it made it to the agenda, because when I looked at four o'clock yesterday, it wasn't on there. So, I don't think we should proceed with processes where it looks like we're trying to sneak things past people, whether that's the intent, whether it was an oversight, I don't know, but I think that's really bad for the city to build trust. I also think that we're not asking the right question. This is about an arena, this is about the city paying for an arena, and we haven't asked the public if that's the number-one thing they would want to put their tax dollars for, or use a TIF for. We haven't asked that question.
I'm Sean Burridge. I'm a newcomer, haven't spoke tonight. I'm in Ward 4. I just want you all to think about something here. This is not a vote on a new arena or an entertainment district. This is a vote to set up a committee. And in my opinion, it's a vote to set up a committee to get what these people are talking about, which is transparency. Right now, we're talking, there's a lot of talk about numbers, meetings. Let's get it going. Let's get it out there. Let's form this committee, let's get this plan together, and let's show the people of Norman exactly what you guys are going to come back later and approve or disapprove. Okay? We're, listen, this is a very simple procedural vote. I'm the former Democratic Leader of the Oklahoma State Senate, and we used to have vote on bills multiple times, and we'd say, "Well, this time, the bill, the title's off the bill." And if the title was off the bill, that meant I was going to get to vote on it again. Well, the title's off this bill, okay? It's going to come back to you. In my opinion, setting up this committee will start the process of transparency, will start the process of open and honest discussion on this issue. Now is the time. Maybe the plan will be get ready in a couple of weeks, maybe ready in a month. Let's get this on. You all do not have to approve this in the end. Let's see what's possible for Norman. We didn't talk about it? OU needs this arena, needs this, needs an arena for two women's sports, basketball and gymnastics, but Norman needs this entertainment district. Because let me tell you something, if this is voted down, there'll be a phone call to places, other places, saying Norman's the same, they don't want this to happen there. Let's at least have the discussion. Let's at least have the discussion, and that's what this committee does. Thank you.
Marguerite Larson, Ward 6. Okay, so you want to have a discussion, then have an open-ended discussion, have a discussion that includes the community, don't have a discussion that includes a handpicked committee. Handpicked committees don't have good discussions that include everyone. Handpicked committees have discussions that try to get their way. So you want to have a discussion, have an open-ended discussion, bring it to the vote of the community, because in essence, it's the community that is paying for this. So yes, you should just kind of hold off on this, get your, get your marbles together, get your facts together, and then bring it to the community. This is a community project. Thank you.
I do not believe that the threat of impending high prices is a reason that anybody's going to stop doing anything related to this project. I suggest we definitely postpone the decision. I think it's time for everybody to get all their cards out on the table. The time for open discussion and open transparency was months ago, not now. Should have started then, but let's start it now. Let's get all our cards on the table. I personally would like to know what the explanation for the new 60-40 split is, when we've been told for months it was going to be 80-20. I haven't even heard that touched on yet. So let's postpone it and figure it out, otherwise, let's just postpone it for good.
Counselors, Mayor, good evening. I don't envy you guys up here. It's a tough, you know, all these discussions. I'm Scott Lambert, Ward 4, owner of the Nant Hotel. I think that we can, we can chew gum and walk at the same time. I vote that we don't postpone this. What I do think is this is a great opportunity to what Mr. Ellis, Mr. Ellis, is that correct to say your last name?
Dr. Ellis.
Oh, Dr. Ellis, excuse me, I'm sorry, Dr. Ellis. A great opportunity now to start building that trust. It's a committee, you guys. This is not a final say. It's just an opportunity to look at something, and let's get a little bit ahead of the curve on this stuff. I'm telling you, people around the state, around the country, are watching us on how we are developing Norman, okay? And we're developing Norman in a great way. We're at a, we're at a renaissance, beginning of a renaissance right now for Norman, the city of Norman. So let's take advantage of that, you guys. Let's, let's be winners, okay? Let's be winners. So just, please, don't postpone this. Let's just put it together and let Dr. Ellis, right here, get his people together to build the trust that you, you want the 60-40. That's a legit question. That's a legit question. So let's get those questions out, but please don't postpone this, okay? This is just something that's going to be great for the community, eventually. Thank you.
Alex Lamphier, Ward 2. When things get snuck onto the agenda 24 hours before a meeting, my trust is eroded, so please postpone this. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Kyle Hurley, Ward 8, hopeful, as Councilmember Elizabeth said earlier. So anyway, if I were sitting where you are, I would vote to not postpone this. I am a little bit concerned that this was brought up last minute and everything, so I get that, but it was brought up, and so, and it's here to decide, and as Dan Shim said very well earlier, you're not on the hook for anything, and several people have said, so I would advise you all, if I were sitting where you were, I would vote to not postpone. Make the decision tonight. Thanks. So I would advise you all, if I were sitting where you were, I would vote to not postpone. Make the decision tonight. Thanks.
Mary Frances, Ward Seven. Hope I'm not out of order right now. Please postpone. Give the public a chance to find out what's going on. Thank you.
Scott Martin, Ward Five. Um, I came here tonight under the thought that the council member had, that this was going to create the committee, that then the project plan could be rolled out at that point in time. Uh, this evening, earlier this evening, you've already eliminated one of your council meetings for the rest of this year. You only have two left now. So further delay does nothing at all. I go back to my Boy Scout motto, be prepared. Get it done now, and then when the project plan's ready, the committee can be called immediately, and then the details can be rolled out as expected. Councilman Holman, I agree with you and your intent. This doesn't commit you or anybody else to anything. All it does is bring out the facts, which I think we all wanna see. So please, um, do not postpone this item and vote against the motion to postpone.
Uh, Foreman.
So a lot of people have asked how this got back on the agenda, and it might surprise people that it was actually at my behest with my fellow council members. On Thursday last week, I met with Catherine and the AIM people, and what you all don't know, which we were told last week, uh, was very shocking. And the next day, on Friday, I met with some members of our OU community who are in the room right now, and I told them to their faces I would never approve it. Not in a million years, and nor would the Norman residents approve it. But the only way to get these things out there in public, for them to hear the feedback and get the ball rolling, so that if we did want to consider something like this, then it would be more amenable to the residents of Norman with a price tag that we're willing to assign to it. And by speaking with our city attorney, the fastest way, not the fastest way, the, the start of it would be by forming this committee. So it commits us to nothing. We can pull the plug on it at any second if we wanted. They present something to us, we can say no. I even told them, if council approves what I saw on Thursday, you would have signatures from every resident in Norman against it. You gotta do better, right? We have to keep this conversation going. This is something that I think is important. There are aspects of it that I think are great for our community. But the only way to do this is by actually formally doing it. So we can form the committee now, we can form it in 10 months from now, and we'll still have the same people coming up with the same questions and concerns. So for me, this is for the public. You need to see what I saw. You need to go to these public hearings and you need to be heard, because it's a very scary proposition. And the only way to get this going, and maybe they might listen, right? Like, we're all partners here. We all wanna work together and further Norman. But the only way to do that is by forming this committee. So I will respectfully not be voting, uh, for the postponement tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Grant?
I do, I appreciate where Councilmember Foreman's coming from. Um, I will be supporting the postponement, because what I saw last week, I felt was premature then, and I still feel it premature now. Um, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Uh, so like my colleague, Councilmember Foreman said, uh, we were asked by city staff Thursday if we would want this item on the agenda. My response was only if it is also going to be going to the, uh, UNP TIF Development Oversight Committee as they had requested. And only if we were not committing to anything other than beginning a process, a public process. And so that's how, unfortunately, City Hall was closed on Friday, and the agenda wasn't updated then, and for whatever reason, wasn't updated till yesterday afternoon. And I absolutely understand how that appears. I feel the same way and said this is not a great way to kick this off by having something go on the agenda the day before. Um, but that is the, that is how that ended up happening. Um, for me, I need something to show the public that I can present and get feedback on and recommend changes to if necessary. Um, I am not pledging my support for any project, um, tonight. And I will not vote for any project that doesn't meet several benchmarks that I have regarding housing, public space, walkability. Um, those are all important to me. The focus seems to be an arena, but the things around it are what is really more important, in my opinion, like the housing component, what type of housing it is, public space, walkability, those things. And so I don't see a major problem other than public uncomfortable with, being uncomfortable with it, which sits, weighs heavily with me. So I don't mind having this plan developed so that we have something to show and having a committee waiting to review it when it is ready. Because I have other project plans I think I want that committee to review in regard to the other TIF areas that we talked about. So I normally do support postponements. I'm not gonna support this one tonight, because I do want the public process to begin right here. Thank you.
Councilmember Montoya?
So, um, my decision-making is typically based on three items. Um, qualitative information, quantitative information, and most importantly, my constituents. So of the qualitative information, you have attended the presentations, and I've seen the, the dream of the arena and the entertainment district. The quantitative information, I really haven't seen a whole lot. And if any of you out there know what I do, and some of you do, I cannot make a decision without having enough quant, qualitative, quantitative information, financials, projections, feasibility studies. Most importantly, the vast majority of my constituents are not for this project at all. And lastly, what really gives me pause is, uh, the Oklahoma State Statute, Title 62, Section 855, Subsection E. Approval of the proposed district or the proposed plan or project by the governing body which is in accord with the recommendation of the review committee shall be a majority vote by the governing body. Such approval which is not in accord with the recommendations and/or conditions set forth by the review committee shall be by two-thirds majority vote. So based on that, um, I will be voting yes to postpone this item.
Councilmember Peacock?
So to build on Councilmember Holman and Foreman's comments, um, we are not approving a TIF tonight. We are not approving an arena tonight. This is the first step in a process, uh, and there'll be several opportunities for the public to put their fingerprints on this via engagement and input. Uh, we will have not lost the opportunity to pivot or to change elements of the proposal or to outright reject the proposal if the terms prove to be problematic. Council will have the final say in this regardless. I am trying to get to a point, I think we are all trying to get to a point where we can actually debate the substance of this proposal and not simply attack it in a vacuum with no details or details from an outdated past proposal. I understand there's a lot of emotion wrapped up in this concept. But I can't make this decision based on emotion alone, and I need facts to do that. This is where we are getting to tonight, and I very much look forward to those future discussions where we are talking about the merits or lack thereof of this proposal. And while I have the floor, I just wanted to ask the city attorney real quick. We are not selecting our, our, the, the, this statutory committee members. Those are required by law as they are a taxing jurisdiction partner, correct?
Correct, correct. And council is not able to select the representative of each taxing jurisdiction, that each taxing jurisdiction selects its own-
Appreciate that.
-by statute.
As with that, I will also respectfully not be supporting the postponement tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah, so, um, I was gonna say something else, but before I do, based on what Councilmember Peacock just said, um, just to be clear, there are at, three at-large members that are going to be selected, and that is by a list of seven um, that is put forward by the chairperson of the statutory review committee. And that person listed out in this is the mayor. So just to be clear, there is some level of not just who is laid out in the statutory, um, the statute, but also, um, some extra members that might be, um, appointed as well. Um, and that won't come back to council before those people are approved. They will be approved, um, from that list of seven, and the committee will vote on them, um, to appoint. So I think, uh, Ms. Walker talked about that in our, um, conference earlier about, um, kind of the process, and that the first meeting of the committee would be, um, to appoint those, uh, additional three members. So my postponement, um, recommendation and amendment tonight was really just to continue furthering this discussion, because my fear was that, um, you know, we were gonna have this, uh, very quick vote. I understand that other council members were in the queue. Um, but I think that it also allowed the public to get more feedback, to, to share more information. Um, and it allowed us to kind of pause and not try to rush through this item. I know that it is late and that we still have two more items. Um, but I think this conversation is important enough that we really need to at least take some time. So I do understand where my fellow colleagues are coming from in terms of, like, starting the process and transparency. I do think that that is where the council as a whole, um, is really trying to come from, that we, we do care about what the public, um, thinks about this. We want input. Um, and I also believe that, um, you know, the applicant also wants that. That has been my, um, you know, experience with any of the meetings that we have had with OU and with other, um, interested parties in this. Um, I do believe that they are trying to come to the table in a different way. But tonight does, again, does not instill that trust, um, with the community. So I understand where my fellow colleagues, um, are on this. Um, and just because I vote to postpone doesn't necessarily mean that I will vote no to approve the, the committee.
Councilmember Nash?
Yeah, so, did I hear that correctly, that, um, if this TIF committee decides one thing and we are, you know, against what they're presenting to us, that it takes a supermajority of the council to approve? Okay.
It would not take a supermajority to turn it down.
So when, you know, when should the public put forward $170 million towards private venture? Well, when the public wants to. The moment that we form this committee, we lose any leverage that we have to make this thing into something that we want. Because if we create this committee, they can bring information to that committee. Now, there's nothing preventing them from bringing this information to the public on their own accord. The only thing that's preventing them from bringing information to us is themselves. We don't need a committee for that. In fact, as long as we don't have a committee, they have some incentive to bring back something that the public can really get behind. And I'm, and I'm not trying to say that this project should be shot down immediately. This, this thing has the makings of something that can be a great thing for the community. What I've been telling them from the very beginning is that, you know, the, the community doesn't want it, they don't care that much about it, an arena. And if they don't care about an arena or more restaurants, then you're gonna have to sell this to the public with the intangible returns. Because honestly, the, the business model's flimsy. We don't know for a fact that it's actually going to make any return before it blights itself. We don't know that it's not going to result in the UNP blighting before it even matures. Uh, what we do know is that in their proposal, there is a science slash weather history museum that I have not heard a single person put down. That by itself is the kind of thing that if we could have our own, you know, city ver, or a Norman version of an omni-plex or some kind of science center, that's the kind of thing that the public would pay, uh, you know, would, would vote to approve a bond to pay for. That's a simple ask, and I haven't seen anybody even endeavor to make that a part of this plan. I've seen lots of, uh, information coming back to us, they're part of the statutory requirements to barrel this project through the process, but I haven't seen any good faith, uh, modifications or even engagement with the community and with the public. And the public, like I said, there's nothing preventing this project or its details from being divulged to the public. And if the public's being asked to be a business partner on this venture, then the public deserves to have every piece of information that any kind of business partner would want. Any partner that's trying to be in any way opaque on, on the financial aspect is somebody that you don't wanna go into business with. You wanna know every aspect of what they're proposing to do. We wanna see the whole in the model that the City of Norman's being asked to fill. And if all else fails, the people would still vote to approve a project that's got this, you know, this wonderful, uh, science center that's kind of, that's really at the core in the minds of the people. Because like I said, the people, you've heard their response. They don't care about the arena. But they do care about things like affordable housing and like the, uh, the science center. Now, whether or not the housing in the neighborhoods are gonna be affordable or not, or not, I don't know. I don't, I think that'd be more complicated a thing to try to put into writing to commit anybody to. So I, I think that's sort of off the table. But still, why can't we just wait until the public has something that they actually want before we start progressing through the process, getting us step by step closer to approval? I understand that, uh, forming this committee isn't approving the project, but it is. It's approving a step towards the, the project and its completion that is completely unnecessary, because like I said, there's nothing preventing them from releasing this information to the public. And to assume otherwise, for them to imply that they can't tell us any details about this project without this committee, well, that shows bad faith. And now we're proposing to move forward with their project? There's nothing wrong with postponing it. In fact, you know, as much as my adrenaline pumps from interest rate fluctuations, I think we'll survive if we wait until this project gets to something that is more palatable for the public. Uh, if that were six months, I don't think anybody would die from it. I think the public would be even happier that they have something that they actually want. I think the people pushing this project forward will be happier that it's easier to push through. And it's not that much of an ask just to create, and just to meet the public halfway, not with the whole project, the arenas, you know, whatever, but with the parts that the public can actually get behind. And that's, that's why I think that, uh, postponing this is really the, the only option that we have to, uh, ensure that our, that the public gets what it wants with the $170 million that they're asking to, and, you know, the TIF financing. And, you know, and by the way, whether or not we actually approve the TIF for this, this area, the, the area's gonna develop economically naturally, whether there's an arena around it or not. So it's, it's not like we have to buy this economic center. As much as it's been threatened to us to have another mile of cars, you know, I like Hondas. But not as much as Jeeps. I like the options. So postponement, I don't, there's no harm in it. The only thing that we can get from postponement is beneficial return that gets the public closer to something that they want to have built in their town. I think that's it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Motion on the, on the floor is to postpone until we have a project plan. Date uncertain. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion fails by a vote of five to four, or excuse me, a vote of four to five. Uh, voting in favor, Councilmember Grant, Councilmember Montoya, Councilmember Schuler- Councilmember Schuler, Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, ma'am. Back to the original motion. Would you like me to reread it? No. A resolution to consider approval of a project plan and creation of one or more tax increment districts under Local Development Act, the Local Development Act, directing preparation of a project plan, appointing a review committee, directing the review committee to make findings as to eligibility and financial impact, and if any, on taxing jurisdictions and business activities within the district, and directing the review committee to make a recommendation with respect to the proposed project. I have a second and a, and all. Any further comment? Councilmember Holman.
Yes. Catherine, the project plan, as it's developed by the city, what is that based, what input is that based off of? Then what they, what the foundation, what the university gives you, what we give you, public feedback, what is, what is that? How is that formed?
Typically, it's based on the proposal made, and then what, based on financial analysis, we believe is feasible. And so we've got to have those conversations. Definitely want council to be involved in that. Happy to do a public presentation when we're done with it, with the draft of it. The main thing is, I think it's important to get council's input on that prior to taking it to the statutory review committee. Because of that provision that Councilmember Montoya cited, you all need to be comfortable with what gets presented to begin with.
So this, okay, so the plan gets developed, and then we vote to send it to that committee? Or not? We get a draft, and we can suggest changes to it?
Yeah, yeah.
We could show that draft to the public? And say, what do you think of this draft?
Yes, we can have those discussions in public meetings.
Okay. And that would be outside of the statutory review committee making anything?
Right, and I would want to do that before we send anything to the statutory review committee, so we know you guys are...
We will be voting to send a draft to them?
It wouldn't be a vote. You're directing me in this resolution to draft a project plan, but I would definitely be seeking your input on that before we take anything to the statutory TIF committee.
Okay, if I were to hold a Ward 7 meeting in a couple, in two weeks, say, just, what could I present? And say, what, this is what, what would I have to present, I guess?
In two weeks?
Just an idea? No, just, I mean, yeah.
Whenever that ends?
Yeah.
So if you want to have Ward meetings after we've developed the project plan, you can take that draft with you and get feedback on that.
What if we want to give you suggestions for that before it's drafted?
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
And we can work on something to help you with that.
And then just for one more clarification. After, if we did, if we agreed, it goes forward, they review, they come back, and we don't like what they recommended, seven, six, just six votes, we could change it, or we could by a regular five votes, reject it.
Right.
What would happen if we rejected it?
It's dead.
That's it?
Yeah.
There's no reject it and change it and come back or anything?
No, I mean, you'd have to really start that process, review process in the statute over after it's rejected. You could always opt to send it back to the statutory review committee and then have it come back, but that's not really addressed in the statute clearly. So whether or not we need to have public hearings all over again, I don't know. But we definitely want to be careful about that.
Okay, thank you.
From a personal note, I would think it would be good to have that discourse on what to do before we get, we sign our name on the line and say, dead gummit, this is what we want. To have that discourse, depending on time. Again, some say that it's not a time-based idea, but it is, because we have to get ready for other, that are external to us, other deadlines that are coming up. So it may require us meeting maybe a couple times extra to be able to talk those things over. I mean, it makes it hard. But anyway, the motion on, uh-huh?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The resolution passes by a vote of five to four. Voting against, Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Grant, Councilmember Montoya, Councilmember Schuler.